Good evening, and thank you all for joining us for our Thursday edition of a regular scheduled board meeting. We had to postpone the other one due to the election. It's now six o'clock. I've asked Commissioner Richardson to open us with the invocation and pledge.
Let's pray. Father, we thank you for this day. God in heaven, we are grateful that we can come out together and take care of business, the county lord, and just be able to do so in a way that's pleasing to you. I pray, Lord, that you guide our discussion tonight. Lord, help us in our decision-making that we do what's right for our community, or what's right under you, and, Lord, that we might glorify you in all the things that we do and say. Lord, I ask you to bless our first responders and our military tonight, keep them safe, that they may continue to do the work that they do for the good of others. And all these things, we pray in Jesus' name.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda is approval of minutes of October 8th, emergency call meeting, and October 16th, regular scheduled board meeting.
Make motion approved.
Second.
Got a motion to approve by Commissioner Sessions, second by Commissioner Richardson. Any changes or discussion? Hear none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. All right, moving on to the consent agenda. You have two through 26. Is there any that wish to be pulled for discussion? I'm gonna pull item 23 and 24. Any others? Not a motion to approve, two through 22, 25 and 26.
Motion approved. Second.
Got a motion to approve by Commissioner Fleming, second by Commissioner Hale. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. On items 23 and 24, I just had a question that is, are we under any time of time crunch that we have to do this, this meeting? I've got some more questions that I wanna ask, but I was not wanting to ask them tonight.
There isn't. We're not on a critical timeline.
So there's no problem with maybe pushing?
Hold on.
I'd just push it off for our meeting?
Yeah.
No action on those, we'll bring them back at the next board meeting. 27, 28 are time-specific. We'll come back to those. We'll move on to 29, presentation of 2018 Rural Community Transportation Coordinator of the Year. Mr. Dean Holmes presenting.
Good evening, Commissioners.
Good evening.
Each year, the Commission for the Transportation Disadvantaged recognizes a community transportation coordinator from a rural county who provides superior transportation services to older adults, persons with disabilities, and people with low incomes in a manner that's cost-effective, efficient, and reduces the fragmentation and duplication of transportation services. The winner of the 2018 Commission for the Transportation Disadvantaged Rural Community Transportation Coordinator of the Year award is your Swanee Valley Transit Authority. As you know, much has changed at Swanee Valley Transit Authority since Commissioner Sessions was appointed in April of 2015. Since then, the number of people that Swanee Valley Transit Authority takes through doctor's appointments, dialysis treatments, jobs, school, et cetera, in Swanee, Columbia, and Hamilton Counties have increased by 13 percent. Also, the team at Swanee Valley Transit Authority has increased the number of trips from an average of almost 2,400 per month to over 5,200 per month, which is an increase of 120 percent. They have increased trips while decreasing the cost per trip and improving on-time performance. Not only is Swanee Valley Transit Authority serving more people, providing more rides, and decreasing the cost of trips, they are also improving the responsiveness of the on-demand transportation services in rural Florida. The Commission awarded the Swanee Valley Transit Authority a Mobility Enhancement Grant in 2017 to provide on-demand, same-day trips for transportation disadvantaged riders in selected areas of Lake City. Riders can now call just 30 minutes in advance to schedule a ride when they want, from when they want to be picked up. This innovation is showing a way for other community transportation coordinators in rural Florida that can take to improve their on-demand transportation services for the older adults, persons with disabilities, and people with low incomes. And Commissioners, we're talking 30 minutes, many of our areas, or some of our areas in the state, you have to call 72 hours, 48 hours, or 24 hours in advance. An improvement of a piloting 30 minutes for a trip in selected areas is a way forward for many of our rural transportation coordinators. Now, changing gears slightly, I would like to thank the dedicated public servants and volunteers who participate in the combined Swanee, Hamilton, and Columbia County Local Coordinating Board. Their advice to and oversight of the Swanee Valley Transit Authority is critical to the Authority's superior performance. The process, however, is not without its challenges. The Commission for the Transportation Disadvantaged thanks those individuals for their service on the local coordinating board and to the people of Swanee, Hamilton, and Columbia Counties. Commissioners, I also want to thank you, the Swanee County Board of County Commissioners, for your continued support of the Swanee Valley Transit Authority and the transportation disadvantaged individuals in Swanee County. So in closing, the Commission for the Transportation Disadvantaged is proud to present the 2018 Rural Community Transportation Coordinator Award of the Year to Swanee Valley Transit Authority.
I don't have a lot to say. I'm just proud that we could do this and save money, make things more efficient for the people that need it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. Have a great night.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
You know, I think we'd really be missing it if we didn't comment those of us that know the condition of that thing when he took it over. I'm gonna tell you right now, it was fairly commonplace for, you know, that service out there to be in the newspaper and the headlines almost weekly for quite a period of time. When Commissioner Sessions stepped in, I thought, oh my goodness, you really know what you're getting into here. But I think he's done a magnificent job. I mean, all of us probably remember the headlines of the significant debt that had been rolled up over there, and I don't remember how long it took to get that stuff paid down, but I'm telling you something, I think he's done a magnificent job, and, you know, we're not having to, some of those phone calls were coming to the Board of County Commissioners saying, what are y'all doing over there with this bus service? And it wasn't us, and it wasn't Commissioner Sessions. But I'm thankful that those days are behind us, and it appears to be in good hands over there, and the finances are in good shape, and people are receiving the service that need to receive it. That's all I wanted to say.
Yeah, I served on that board one year, and it was about, the first three months was when everything hit the fan, that where the money was going, how the administration was running, and then the other nine months was trying to take a budget that was way in the red and save an agency, because not only was the money gone that the administration, the previous administration has misspent, the main revenue source, which was the Medicaid, Medicare, was reallocated through the state, and the main funding source for the agency dried up. So they came, Mr. Sessions came in with a, almost a possible task in front of him, and they turned it into even a better agency than probably what it's ever been, and we thank you for it.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, has somebody had my thoughts? Through no fault of my own, I was elected chairman of the board over there.
That was my fault.
Don't miss a meeting, especially the first one here.
You're not the first one that was done to you, Larry.
But working with Larry has been a privilege, and not just on this board, I know this is his last meeting, but on that board, where, watch him take care of the numbers and continue to drive revenue and look at the margins. I have a lot more respect for him now that I know a lot more about what he does than I would have just known him on the board. I have a lot of respect for him anyway, but, so he's done a great job, and I hope he continues to serve in that capacity.
Thank you.
For a long time.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to voice my sentiment. For Commissioner Sessions, I didn't work on the, served on the board with him over there, but I knew the condition. Having been elected in 2010, I served on that board, I think, three years, 2010 to 2013. I knew the condition, like Mr. Harris said, it was very crucial. It was terrible, and for Commissioner Sessions to bring it up to where it's at now, I would say a job well done, and I thank you for that.
Thank you, Colin.
If you don't mind, Mr. Chairman, I'll just say the same thing, and kind of echo them. I've been on that board for two years, myself and Mr. Richardson, and to see the budget that he's worked with within those two years and what he's done with it, and where he's taken that thing, he's driving the bus the right way. That's all I can say. He's doing a great job. So, thank you.
Yes.
Let's move on.
Well, we got, we got, we got, we got three more minutes, so I was hoping they kept talking, so we could get to this.
I don't need any more, trust me.
Anybody else want to come to the podium and waste these three minutes, and talk about Larry?
You said waste.
Let me give you a couple of numbers. No meat. The budget they were talking about.
Give the numbers, they're great numbers.
They had four point, about $4.8 million budget. I have a $1.8 million budget. And like Mr. Holmes said, we've doubled the ridership. In 2014, our fuel cost was $264,000, and the year that I got the award for our fuel cost while transporting more people was $120,000. So basically, in any transportation thing you do, if you can reduce miles, you reduce costs. Windshield time for employees and fuel costs, which equates to tires and oil and all those things. So that's been my primary goal, was to be more efficient. Lucky enough for me, I had 30 years' experience at UPS trying to be efficient, so that was a big help, working there that kind of taught me how to run a fleet. So, the difference of this, though, is you're, you're in people's lives every day. Some people don't even know you're in their lives, because mentally, they don't know you're even doing anything for them. They're just part of the system. But it is, it's a blessing to be able to give service to people that need it. I just wish we could do more. That's been all I got.
Thanks, sir. Well, we almost made it there. I got one. I just got one item I was gonna bring up at Commissioner's comments, and I'll bring it up now, just to fill in the gap. On the 30, November 30th, at 9:00 PM, Christmas on the Square is doing fireworks. I believe the location that they were gonna use, for reasons out of their control, they're not gonna be able to use this year, and we were gonna ask if we could use the Natty Basin property to shoot them off, and see if anybody had any problems with that. Should there be any issues, Mr. Pat?
I don't. All their parking is gonna be, but.
Where you gonna shoot them off, right over here?
Over your house.
No, 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 no.
Right, gonna aim towards your house, not at your house.
You said you're gonna shoot them back, right back here?
Yeah, back, back, like where they did for the football field, a homecoming.
The last time they got ready to shoot them off over there, this community on this side, which is in my district, they confronted me about it. So.
So you're gonna leave for the weekend?
I'm gonna leave for the weekend. So I haven't heard anything, I just wait until I hear anything, whether they have some complaints, and I get back with you and Mr. Harris.
All right, well, Ms. Norris, could I ask you a couple of questions on it? Far as shooting them off, can, can we move to the far end of the, of the property? Does, I know, like, a homecoming, we saw, they shot them off on.
You're right, for the Bulldog Bash, they, they were actually shooting them down here, I think, on school board property at the end of the visitors', and, and so, yeah, we were kind of anticipating actually being back more towards this end, more of a buffer zone, so.
And not really shooting them back over the neighborhood, shooting them back, or I guess, straight up?
Well, where's Clyde lives?
Well, I won't tell you, I won't tell you where I live at, but Commissioner Sessions knows that the situation is a young man, he's a schizophrenic, and he's, his family think that he would just, you know, go.
Loud noises.
He'd have some issues.
We, obviously, we, in proximity, I don't know how much quieter it is if we're, you know, two blocks that way or two blocks this way.
I think say the distance is versus shooting them off from the old, up in the Gilmore Parking Lot.
Let me ask you this.
Yes, sir.
How long do we have to figure this out?
It's November the 30th is the night, Friday night, so.
What if I can get to up in Gilmore Property back to do it?
We've kind of visited that avenue, and we've been in contact with their.
Talked to Mike?
Their, their guys, yes, or directly, and there's, there's a couple of issues. I'm not sure that we could overcome that with, with how.
You've already talked to him, then, don't worry about it.
Yeah, it's, it's really not to do with us and them, it's more about, you know, the attorneys and, and where he's at with that property, and he's worth a lot more than we are, so. But we've, we've tried that, and we thought we had it worked out, but, and again, it's on, you know, it's two blocks that way, they, they literally shot them off right over the edge of the road over here, I think, a couple of weeks ago for the Bulldog Bash. We're, we're gonna be back over that way and going back more towards the football stadium, not towards, you know, this way, but.
Well, I haven't heard anything, and I know they did have some fireworks during the Bulldog Bash.
Yes, sir.
Didn't hear anything, if, if it don't, don't hear anything, I'm fine with it.
Well, unfortunately, I guess you probably wouldn't hear it till after we did it, but, you know, obvious.
And they were good.
You know, we, it is a big part of the show, people travel, our actual sponsor for that, Busy Bee's the title sponsor for that event, but Florida Public Utilities, which you guys are familiar with here in the community, you know, they actually are the sponsor for that, and, and their main guys that come from down South Florida drive up every year. We didn't even realize this till last year, when he said how much he enjoyed the show. We didn't even know he attended, 'cause they didn't tell us, 'cause he didn't want to be bothered, but they actually drive up and come up for Christmas on the Square that weekend and participate, just, just to see the fireworks, and apparently, they love the parade, too, so. But, yeah, we, it is tough downtown, obviously, and we want to be as safe as we can be, and, and we did have another meeting on this with the officials, the city was there, you know, of course, the sheriff was there, and parts and wreck, and fire rescue, and, and I think all those guys feel like it's, you know, probably our safest and best bet to do it downtown, and so, you know, we're just asking for your consideration on that, 'cause the 20,000 people that come downtown, and we want to be mindful of everyone, obviously, so.
I'm fine with moving forward with it. I would allow, we don't, can we just have a consensus, the board, they need a vote on it?
Well, I, like I said, I'm, I'm fine with it. I haven't received a phone call from people in this community over here, so I just wait till I hear something, and if not, go with it.
Jamie, what's your phone number?
The only other person that you haven't named that I would check with was, would be check with our insurance carrier, you know, for that, and I take it you've already done that? Yeah? Okay, well, that's the only other person I would check.
I know, our clearances are good. If you have a problem, if you get a phone call, we're gonna have fire service services right in this area.
Okay.
For, you know, provide services for fireworks. If you get a phone call as far as that person, we'll, we'll have to go there and check them out.
Good.
And make sure there's no issues with the insurance. That's why I vote for.
Can we, can we just, if the board associates, can we just go ahead and approve it for them contingent upon approval?
And we've already submitted for the, just in case, for the certificates of insurance for the county, as well as we do for the city, so those have already been, you know, requested, so we'll have those in our hand shortly that we can give to the.
Would that be okay?
Yeah.
You need a motion, then?
Yes.
I'll make a motion.
Got a motion to approve it by Commissioner Sessions, a second by Commissioner Richardson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Yep, that guy has five more minutes, so we're good.
I'm trying to do us a stop for a minute or something.
At 6:15 or sooner or after, as the matter can be hold, hold a public hearing to consider adoption of CPA 18-2, an ordinance pertaining to application by Tim Alcorn, authorized agent for Clear Properties LLC for the future land use plan map of comprehensive planning change from classification of residential one to commercial. This time, we'll open public hearing and turn our attention to Mr. Pravat to swear in any witnesses.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If there's anyone, including staff, that anticipates that they may give any testimony before the board during the public hearing, would you please stand to be sworn? Gentlemen, do each of you swear to tell the truth, so help you God.
I do.
Thank you. All right, as we've always talked about, whenever you approach the podium, please state your name and address.
All right, Mr. Meeks.
Mr. Chairman, board members, the first application that you have for your consideration is CPA-18-02. This is a small-scale, future land use map amendment for a parcel of property located in Section 13, Township 2 South, Range 13 East. The original application was to include a 10-acre parcel for consideration, which qualifies as a small-scale amendment, which means that we handle the approval at a local level, and it doesn't, is not subject to the Department of Economic Opportunity formal review process. The request was recommended for approval by the Planning and Zoning Board at their previous meeting. It was later determined that approximately four acres of this 10 acres was actually located within the city limits of Lavo. So what we would request as part of this application would be, is if the board so chooses to, or approve the amendment, do so contingent upon us being able to revise the legal description that the surveyor will provide us to incorporate only the portion of the property that we have the jurisdiction to approve. I think there were some last-minute changes that changed some of the lines, and it was not known at that time that a portion of this property actually encroached into what was already annexed into the city. So the portion that the county would be dealing with is still a small-scale amendment, in that it wouldn't be 10 acres, it would reduce their acreage to probably six acres and some change. Mr. Alcorn, which is the surveyor, has some maps that he can present to the board showing what the request reflects, but we have a land use and a zoning request that will be after this that mirror each other. The first process is to amend the land use map, and then the second process would be to amend the Land Development Regulation official zoning atlas. But currently, the land use on this described property is residential, single-family. The request is to change that from residential, single-family to commercial. The concurrency management assessment that we reviewed for the traffic on US 129 currently operates at a level service B. The proposed development, being roughly a 10-acre parcel, would not cause a deficiency in the level of service for that area if the property is developed. At this time, I will enter the file into the record and just make note that if the board does choose to approve the application, that we will be amending the legal description that's contained on the ordinance that's in your packet. And at this time, I will enter the file into the record.
Thank you, Mr. Meeks. I'll take in the file as composite exhibit one.
Mr. Alcorn is present. He can go over the issue with the discrepancy of the property.
Okay.
I have one question first.
Yes, sir.
While he approaches. You say you're gonna reduce the acreage on it?
The amendment that the county has jurisdiction would be reduced from 10 to about 6 and so forth.
But the zoning will still be okay, or you have to do a special waiver for that?
Same thing, we'll go with the zoning. That'll be.
The zoning is the next one.
Be the next, okay, all right.
Tim Alcorn, 14549, County Road 250, Lavo. I'll answer any questions that you have. Like I say, it was, we created a 10-acre description, then realized that a portion of it is already within the city limits and zone commercial intensive? Commercial, I guess, it was, it's zone commercial, already what's in.
No, it's, it's, you've got two different things. The land use is already commercial.
The land use, the land use are, it won't create a gap or anything. What we'll do, what I'll have to do is get their description revised, and it'll drop it down roughly about 6.4 acres. All we're basically doing is taking the east 157 feet off of the description.
Okay.
Got some little maps here, if you're gonna look at them, not refined, but that's basically what you're doing, is taking off about the east 157 feet. That is an imaginary line that's 1,000 foot west of the west right-of-way line of US 129. That's where that zoning line comes through there. I don't know if it shows up on your map, if it shows up on your little map or not. Yes, you can, you can kind of see it.
See that little white line?
Yes. See, if you look, see the little white line, that's where the description kicks over to is that. That's what folks are taking title to, is that track of land, and then we realize that that part is within the city limits of Lavo.
Mr. Chairman, so that's the only reason why you're dropping it, reducing it?
Yes, sir, that's the only reason, yes, sir. Like I say, it'll drop it to about 6.4 acres.
Their acreage stays the same, and the project size stays the same, but just.
Yes, sir.
There's only, that's only six acres that we have jurisdiction over.
Correct.
Sure.
Correct.
And once we make the change, that will make the, will that match the current description that the city already has on the property?
Yes.
So, okay, so then, okay, so they don't have to go back before the city to get a change?
Yes.
The city's already amended their land use to cover that property that was annexed to city's commercial.
Okay.
And the zone, well, I'll address the zoning in the next.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Alcorn?
Yes, sir. Mr. Alcorn, would you put one of those maps in as, as an exhibit?
They're not fancy, but, yes. Can we give it to Ronald, you, who?
Give it to me, please. All right, thank you, sir. All right, we'll take this in as landowner's exhibit number one.
Do you, do you have another one, so I can give it to the clerk?
Hmm?
Thanks, sir. All right, if no one else has a question for Mr. Meeks or Mr. Alcorn, we'll open public comments, and if anyone from the public wishes to speak, they'd make their way to the podium, name and address for the record. All right, seeing none, we'll close public comment. Any discussion by the board, or action the board wants to take?
Can I make a comment, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'm not, I'm not concerned with the change in, in the description here. The property that is still under our jurisdiction was correctly noticed, you know, even though it was contained in a, in a larger description, so the public did have the appropriate notice on the property that is, you know, the subject of the change.
Okay. So we're covered on all of that?
Yes, sir.
All right. Any other?
Do you need a motion?
Yes, sir.
I made a motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion to approve by Commissioner Sessions, second by Commissioner Fleming. Does that need to include anything specific for the reduction in acreage?
Just, just for, for the ordinance to include the revised description.
Okay.
Do you want me to restate my motion?
If you would, please, sir.
Make a motion to approve.
I think that was understood, but.
Number 27, I think, yeah, I think it's understood, but to do the revised description of the property and question.
All right.
Second.
Got a motion by Commissioner Sessions, second by Commissioner Fleming. Any further discussion? Hear none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. Passes five, but this time, we'll close public hearing, and we'll enter into our next public hearing. 6:15 or sooner or after, as the matter can be heard, hold a public hearing to consider adoption of LDR 1802, an ordinance pertaining to, to an application by Tim Alcorn, authorized agent of Clear Properties LLC to amend the official zoning atlas of the Land Development This time, we'll turn our attention back to the attorney. I think everybody's probably gonna speak. I think everybody's probably going to speak, was sworn in, but if you, anyone else wanting to speak on this one will be sworn in. If not, if you were sworn in prior, it'll carry over to this.
Mr. Chairman, board members, the second step in the process, first is to amend the land use. The second step would be to amend the zoning atlas. Subject property is still the same location, same acreage and size. The determination that a portion of the boundary property was located within the city limits of Live Oak has previously been discussed. Same with this ordinance, we would recommend that if you do choose to approve this request, we would do so, allowing us to amend that legal description. As far as the zoning goes, in the previous application, the city did amend the land use to match the city's commercial. The city has not rezoned the property that is within their jurisdiction now, and that will be done on a case-by-case scenario as that property develops by the individual property owner. So as it sits now, because the property can't sit out there with no zoning on it, the county's commercial intensive still sits as the zoning designation on the abutting property. So we don't have any skips or jumps in inconsistent zoning there. It will still be commercial intensive for all of the adjoining properties. That's all I have to address on the Land Development Regulation Amendment, and at this time, I'll enter the file into the record.
And thank you, Mr. Meeks. We'll take the file in as composite Exhibit number one.
Board have any questions for Mr. Meeks or Mr. Alcorn? At this time, we'll open the floor to public comments. Anyone wishing to speak, make their way to the podium, name and address for the record. Seeing none, at this time, we'll close.
Well, we're not closing public.
We're not?
No, we're not closing, we can close public comment.
That's what I was closing.
Okay, all right, good. I want to make sure that, I want to make sure Mr. Alcorn stands back up again.
Well, he can stand up, even though I'm not on public comment.
Okay.
He's, all right.
You should have him speak first, or.
Well, I asked if anybody had any questions for him, he's not been asked.
Tim Alcorn, 14549 County Road 250, Live Oak.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Alcorn, do you have another map?
Yes, sir, I do.
That is, can be entered into this hearing?
I got two of them.
Is that evidence?
Two of them, please, sir.
Well, I got two of them.
Okay. Don't make me reach for it.
There's there.
Okay. All right, thank you. We'll take the map in as exhibit number one for the landowner.
Any questions?
I don't have any.
All right. The wishes of the board, have a motion to approve it?
I have a motion, I'm making a motion to approve with the, again, the revised map, revised description.
Motion by Commissioner Richardson, was that you, Mr. Hale?
Yes, sir.
Second by Commissioner Hale. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. Passes 5-0. This time, we'll close public hearing. Thank y'all, y'all. All right, this time, we'll go to item number 30, Presentation of Year in 2017/18 Budget, Sheriff St. John.
Very pleased to come forward with you. I gave everybody a copy of what my year in money was. Very, very fortunate that we, they were able to do this, it's that $564,000. There's a lot of, a lot of reason, you know, why we come with this number. You know, naturally, when I first started sheriff, there's a lot of things that I wanted to upgrade and up in, to build on the sheriff's office, and so far, we've, we've accomplished that. Now, in doing that, you know, I just want to make sure that, you know, I didn't, as being a fairly new sheriff, I didn't want to run out of money. So we, we kind of tightened our bells and watched our budget and so forth because of implication of the Smart Cop system. You know, we're working on trying to get some type of radio system going, and so I just want to make sure, you know, that, that we didn't go overboard. And a couple of things that, that has helped me with this number here, now unfortunately, you know, I wish we could do this every year, but a couple of things I just want to mention is probably why we got this number, is that I want to brag on my captain at the jail, John Mills. We have a, you know, the different inmates, we get, they have to naturally, all when they come to jail, I guess they have, that's when they have all the aches and pains and got to go to the doctors. So we had a doctor bill of $134,000, and John was able to go down to Gainesville, to the hospital down there and negotiate with some of the, I think he actually talked, we talked to some of the attorneys down there, and got reduced down to $36,000. So we saved $98,000 by us negotiating this, this bill. Now, that's, you know, and I'm proud of that, hopefully, we can do it every year, but that's, that's kind of a, kind of a hit and miss, but we was very fortunate to do that. Another thing is that, because just like I say, the implication of me wanting to upgrade the department, I didn't order as many cars last year, and, you know, naturally had officers, you know, use their cars another year. We went over about the, went through the budget process of the school resource officers, adding to them, and we just used some of the spare cars for them, which is working out fine, you know, because they just drive from, from the house to the, to the school and park them and so forth. Another thing is that, you know, we purchased some uniforms the year ago and during the last couple of years, so we happened to do none on the 17/18 budget and so forth, but there's, there's a numerous, numerous things, but I guess, I guess some, some of the bigger items where we was able to save some money was the cars and these medical expenses and uniforms and so forth, and there's a lot of other things, but too long a list to, to list here for you. And since, you know, since we was able to, to save this money for us, I'd kind of ask if y'all would consider, you know, as the building that we're in, it, it's Criminal Division, I'm not sure, did we ever figure out when it was built, Mr. Harris, back in?
Which part of?
I guess probably the original part, it's, I mean, it's, it's been there for what, 30, 30-plus years or more?
It's been there a while. I mean, the other four or five pieces that were added to it, I'm sure came after that, but I'm not.
Yeah. But I guess everybody knows where I'm talking about, our Criminal Division, and that's what I was, you know, was trying, trying to task on taking this on, is trying to save some money along, along to put for a building fund, and, and I was asking if we can have $200,000 for, for a building fund, and, and also, there's $117,000 for our Smart Cop system payment. Now, you know, when we first implemented, you know, you was, the, the board was gracious enough to give us the, the money for the initial startup costs and going live, and, and now it's up to us, that, you know, for me to get it through my operating budget to pay it. So like I say, we, then we've, have done a good job of saving money, so I was asking to try to use this $117,000 for a second-year payment, which was begin, or is due around the first of the year, maybe use some of this money here for that. So, and which would leave the county, which would leave the Board of County Commissioners the $247,000 to, you know, however you wanted to, you know, implement it from that point on. So I was asking for the, for them to earmarks the building fund and the Smart Cop. I talked to Mr. Harris the other day during our budget process, talked about the old Criminal Division, that y'all approved, you know, I think $90,000 to fix a roof, which, which I agree, you know, whether, whether I'm there or whoever's there, the roof needs to be fixed because then you compromise what was actually inside it. Another thing that y'all approved was the, the parking lot, like around $70,000. You know, like I say, this, this building is old, I'm wanting to, you know, put this money forward to, to a new building, you know, and, you know, we've done this, the parking lot that's been there now for however long we've been there, and, and I'm not, you know, my thought is if, if we can take that $70,000 and put it in the building fund, and we just get, if I can talk Mr. Harris and bring me out some Millens out there and spread them out, I'm happy with that and save us some money and put toward a building fund. So from the money that I'm able to return, the building fund, the Smart Cop, and then if we could, y'all thoughts, your thoughts about using this, this parking lot to pave the parking lot to go into the building fund?
Now, Mr. Harris, correct me if I'm wrong, but that $70,000 was you putting Millens out there, right? Yeah, we were actually going to recycle some plastic and just threw it around out there. Oh, I think we, I believe that was a number that I used from what we spent at the courthouse when we went out there and prepped all that and then had the asphalt.
It was, and I don't have a problem not doing parking lot, I think I had a little bit of heartburn with doing it at the budget workshops. Thoughts from the board?
I'll be honest, I got a question. Sheriff, is that second-year payment not budgeted in already to your, this year's budget?
Well, well, when we, we first got the 287, you know, y'all said that, you know, hey, this, you know, this, we don't want you to come back to the board and ask for any of your payments, and so, so what we did, we just absorbed with an operating fund.
So it's, you just absorb it?
Yeah, so we just absorb it. So that, there, here, here again, that's why we're, we tighten our bells to make sure that we're able to do that, you know. So, you know, and, and it's not due until the first of the year, so, and then plus, we was, we don't know until the very end, you know, about, just like I say, this medical payment, we knew we had it, so we were just, you know, just fortunate enough to get this cut down, you know, saved $98,000 there. But there again, we can, there's, we've got several options, you know, to, to make our payments, you know. Either through, you know, you know, watching, watching our budget and do it within operating fund, or we also have a... There's a, there's a law enforcement trust fund and another SCAP grant that, you know, we're able to, that money is used for, you know, for law enforcement equipment. So, so, you know, just like I say, if, if we run tight on our budget, you know, we, and we weren't able to do it in all, all of the operating fund, then we got the, we got a backup plan. Now, naturally, you know, since we're able to save the money, then that's why I was asking y'all to be able to use it, you know, for the second payment. Not, not that we couldn't do it within operating fund, or we could, or do the backup plan and do the trust fund, but since we have, since we're able to save that, I was just seeing, could we use that versus going into our backup plan?
Mr. Chairman, I, I just don't know if anybody's got ideas on $247,000, but considering that we know we've got expenses that we're going to deal with going forward, and we may not see near as much money come back next year, and we're in a good year this year, that maybe we ought to put more than $200,000 into a building, to a fund for the building, and just kind of get a little bit more of a head start on it.
Sheriff, quick question. In 2, was it 17, 18 we did the initial purchase on Smart Cop?
16, 17.
16, 17.
Yeah.
So the, the payment that you're asking for will be the 18, 19 payment, this year's payment?
Yeah, this year, sure.
Okay.
You, then, then the, the first money you gave us, the 28, I think it was 287, went for the, you know, the, the initial first payment and then the, then the going live, which equaled up to 287, and then from there, we do the, the, I think it was three more equal payments plus the maintenance cost.
Okay, so this, 16 was our original purchase, 17 was, 18 was the first payment, and then we're into the second payment.
Yes, sir.
So we are already budgeted for this payment. If we, are we, if we pay this earmark it for the second one, do we have plans for the other one that we budgeted for? Because I mean, I know, I know we didn't specifically budget it.
Well, we don't, yeah, we don't, it's not really a line, we just, you know, we just, you know, absorb it in, in operating budget, you know, and, and like I say, since we was able to, fortunate enough to get this money back, you know, you know, there's, like I say, we got to catch up on our cars, and, you know, there's some, there's some stuff that we've been kind of skipping on, you know, some of it was some training and so forth, and some other equipment that we've just been holding off, so I just figured, well, maybe if we can use some of this for that payment, then, you know, we can, we can go forward with some of the stuff that I was holding back off on this year.
The agreement we have with them won't allow for you to pay the second payment out of your budget and for us to use that to pay it off in this year?
I asked, finance with Michelle about that, and she says that, I, I think the Smart Cop would have just that, in, that our auditor says that, you know, if it's, you know, if it's, from what she's telling me, the auditor's not saying, we don't need to do that, we need, we don't need to pay it in advance. Now, I'm not sure, we'd have to do some digging and see if there's some way around it, but I asked that same question.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir. I wouldn't mind paying it off, that's all.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I, I have no problem with that either.
I wouldn't, wouldn't have a problem, so much of an issue, a problem with it, but would this actually help? And you know, you said, you said something about concerning the roof got a leak in it, which got to be fixed.
That's budgeted separately.
That's budgeted separately.
Okay, what about the parking lot?
That was budgeted separately.
Separately, okay.
Yeah.
But I wouldn't have an issue with it.
Okay, thank you.
You don't have a problem with what?
With, with, he's talking about paying the payment.
Oh, the payment. Yeah, I, I'm gonna, Mr. Chairman, can I just comment briefly?
Yes, sir.
On the payment, and I talked to the sheriff about this back when we were putting the worksheets together. My opinion is that it should show as a line because it did originally. Now, the board can do whatever it wants to, but going forward, I, I believe that second, third, any, you know, continuing payment should always show as a line, but if the board wants to do it this way, that's fine.
No, I, I would like to have seen it a line, but during the workshops, we knew what was coming from, but if it's in a line, when it's in this situation, you know where it's going, know where it's coming from and what it's going back to.
What would be, Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind?
Yes, sir.
No, you, Sheriff, you said something about saving on the parking lot to 70,000, but that was an asphalt job. What would a Millens cost out of that?
I've never run a number on Millens for that parking lot. That number just, you know, we had just done the courthouse parking lot, and we knew that that's what we spent on it, and it was, I think we figured it was roughly the same size, about what it amounted to. Now, we were going to go out there and do some of the work to clean up, spruce up that asphalt. I mean, the lime rock.
One thing the board has taken into consideration is, I know we've talked and talked about putting aside money for building, but you kind of got to take into consideration what your plan is on how far down the road you're going to build a building. You're still going to have to do the maintenance on this, far as parking lots, keeping the parking lots up, keeping the roofs up, keeping the building sound, because, I mean, lack it or not, you're in it until a new building comes. And I've said it before, for me, I mean, that's, it's a 10-year plan for me. I'm not, not into building a building next year or the year after. So that's just food for thought.
I have a question.
You're looking at probably $2 million to build a building, I mean.
At least.
That was my next question.
That was my next question, too. Have you researched size building and possible property, and what it would cost?
No, not, I mean, we've got some, you see, there's some ballpark figures, you know, but, but no, not an answer question, no, we're really having, it's something to where we could give you some hard numbers, we haven't, no, sir.
I can just tell you the building next door is $2 million building.
Yeah, right, well, I mean, it's, yeah, it's a good start to start a building fund, I mean, that's what you need to be doing, so I just wanted.
No, I, I get that, I'm just, and don't neglect the maintenance of a building.
At 200, at 200 a year, you're talking 10 years.
10 years.
To $2 million anyway, unless you try to bump it up a little bit, but you definitely need to keep some money back for repairs, just like you do the roof, but then something else may happen, you know.
Yes, sir.
Repair air conditions and everything else. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't give it all back, you know, but you got a good start here, maybe a little bit more money to the building fund, save some of it.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking about, the difference between the 70,000 and what it would cost to do the, just the Millens. If we were going to do any extra, we could pull it out of that and add to it and let the rest of it stay in here.
Mr. Chairman, can I make a suggestion?
Yes, sir.
We just take, if we just take it, put it $300,000, set $300,000 aside, we know we've got, if we do Millens on the, rather than the asphalt, it's going to be cheaper, no matter how much it's going to be, it's going to be cheaper. You've got $47,000 on a round number to round off the, the top number. I honestly think we can afford to do $300,000. We're not guaranteed we're going to be able to put $200,000 aside every year for the next 10 years, and I think we probably need, it'd be responsible for us to at least take advantage of the opportunity that we have right now.
Yeah, we do.
Did we budget that 70,000 out of general fund, or was that a final forfeiture? Do you remember? I don't, I don't think we budgeted it through, I think that was an additional item that we added.
It was on, I think it was on the wish.
It was on the wish list, that's general fund dollars, I mean, that's...
Probably is.
I was just, just throwing that out there. I, I don't want to get too high on that building fund, I'm not, I'm not feeling it like y'all are, but that's, whatever y'all want to do.
Mr. Chairman, I'm, I move that we allocate $300,000 into the building fund, the rest of it comes back after the Smart Cop payment. I, I don't have a problem with the Smart Cop payment, but I would like to see y'all still line item in your next budget.
Okay.
For that, so we at least know where it's going.
So, so you're increasing the current year budget then by 177,000 because Smart Cop was budgeted in the current year budget?
No, 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 I said I would, I would have, I would like to see next year going forward, I'm just making a comment, I'm not, that's not part of the motion.
Okay, so you're just motioning for the building?
Motion $300,000 and $117,000.
I got a motion by Commissioner Richardson.
That's...
Do I have a second?
And I'm not against it, I just don't know if we need to...
That's $417,000.
Yeah, I'm a little nervous on that all at one time, that, that's my only thing.
So that's...
Well, I'm, my question is, it's $564,000.
If I don't have a motion or a second, I mean, the, this time, then the motion's going to die for a lack of a second, now you can go on with your conversation.
Okay. It's $564,000 that we didn't have yesterday, correct? Okay, so it's going to get spent somewhere. I know this board, we're going to spend it, we're going to find a place to put it.
You speak for yourself, now don't throw me into that.
No, I'm just saying, we got things, we got things to do.
If you look at the tradition, though, what has occurred, is that, that money typically starts your budget.
Traditionally, that money goes, it starts your budget, it starts your final forfeiture budget for next year.
For the next year.
So if you typically, since I've been on the board since 2012, portion of it gets put to different things, but a good portion of it, usually more than half, goes back in to start the next year's budget.
So how much was put in last year?
Now that, I don't know, because we didn't have a presentation or brought back the last year, that'd be a question for finance.
Hang on, I can do it.
Anyone's here for finance?
Jimmy's looking it up.
That's Mr. Tanner Berry, no, I don't know.
Oh, there she can.
That would leave us.
Sorry, behind Lynn.
It's fine.
I, I could, I could agree with the 200,000 for the building fund, and we've already got the $117,000 budgeted, and I would say leave that in the budget and move forward if you want. That's just my thinking on it. I'm more comfortable with that. And then the rest of it goes back in to start the final forfeiture budget for next year. You don't know where you're going to be next year if you go ahead and allocate it all this year.
I think Jimmy's about to get me answered.
Well, regardless of what was turned in last year, you're still where you are.
Right. I want to say, I think it was around 90,000, but I might be lying to you, I don't know for sure, I can't remember.
So you basically are saying you're looking at 317...
If he does what he wants to do, then it would be 247 plus 117. Is that correct? Did I, did I hear you right?
Yeah, that's, that's correct.
But the payment is already budgeted, correct?
The payment's budgeted.
Out of your operations, you think we're going to pay the...
Yeah, I mean, it's already there, yes, sir. But, you know, since we was fortunate to have this back, I just, you know, I figured we could, some of the stuff that I'd done without, you know, this year, I could, I could implement, you know, if we could pay part of this payment, you know, with this, what was, the 117.
How many more payments do you have on that?
Next year, next year should be the last one.
Yeah, yeah.
That's why I said, I would be fine paying it off, but I don't want to...
Use a discount for early payment?
I worked to get your budget down to where it is this year, and I don't want to up it by 117,000, because I mean, we worked hard to get it cut by 100 and something thousand dollars during the...
Well, I mean, that's, that's why it's not, you know, you used about the line item, you know, because, you know, because y'all were gracious enough to give me the money to get started up from, and then you said, hey, so I don't want, you come back before the board and ask for any more money, and so that's why we just absorbed it within our budget, our operating budget, and, and that's why we was, you know, making sure we was pitching, pitching pennies and so forth, and, and, and so we was fortunate enough to, you know, have some, some good luck here to have this back. I said, well, maybe we can use some of it to pay the, the second payment, and then I can catch up with cars and some other stuff that I'd done without last year.
Mr. Chairman, I don't see, I mean, I think this is moot, but at this point, but line item, if he's got a certain amount of money, there's budget for operating expenses, and that includes that $117,000, separating that, that one thing out by line item, it's only going to last two more year, or this year, next year.
And then it, then a lie goes away.
I think you're just splitting hairs over stuff that, that doesn't matter because it's going to disappear after that.
I know, but it gives you the ability to see where it's going, oversight.
It would show up next year as a line item, is what it amounts to, and it would show up as a final payment.
A final payment.
But it wouldn't necessarily increase the budget.
It will this year if you add 117,000 back into it.
I know, but I'm not asking, that wasn't what I was asking for.
That's, that's a question. I don't know how many needs, and I don't want to open that can.
Yeah.
All right, time to craft and get off the floor, which I want to do.
You know, it needs to be the same equal as that.
One question, I was listening, but I wasn't listening, I was reading. What did you say about your account that said about paying it off early?
Yeah, they, you know, that's why I asked, you know, our financial said that, that they, since it wasn't, you know, the sense of what, what new sense is, you know, made out of payments and what do, then they didn't want us to pay it early. But now, you know, like I say, now, we, I hadn't, you know, seen if there's any way around that, there could be, because, just like I say, I don't see no, no big issue of paying, paying just going and paying it off, I mean, that, you know, I have no problem with that either.
But it doesn't cause a problem for us, does it?
Not paying early. Yeah, it was joking, sort of, when I said it, but I mean, would they give you any kind of a discount for early payment, paying it off? I mean, can we inquire on that?
Yeah, we can definitely inquire, yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, can we readjust this issue after we find out for sure on the Smart Cop comeback, and if we just set aside $200,000 for the building fund and took the rest of it, come back and revisit this, could we do that?
Yeah, that would work.
I'd make a motion to set aside the 200,000 and come back later to discuss the rest of the Smart Cop information.
I got a motion by Commissioner Sessions, set aside $200,000 to the Sheriff's Department Building Fund, I have a second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hill, any further discussion? Hear none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Sheriff Hohn, make one comment, send your captain down there to negotiate.
Exactly. Yes, sir. Yeah. Make sure I got, you, you still, you want me to check to see if, if we can pay it off all at one time, then, then we'll just do that versus the, the building fund?
I would rather pay it off, that, rather than...
Okay.
Than to add $117,000 and not know where the other $117,000 is going.
But you want, but you want to see if we can just go and pay it off?
Yeah, we'll go ahead and pay it off.
With this, with this, with this year and money?
Yeah, I'd be fine with that.
Okay, okay.
And see if you, but see if you can get a discount for it.
Yeah, yeah, definitely will, yes. Yeah, I'll send, I'll send John down there.
That's right.
Thank, thank y'all.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Hey, quick, quick question, I know we had a meeting at the EOC about the 911, talking about the dispatchers and the raise, and I had mentioned to you about using this extra funding for the raise, and I think your finance lady shook her head, no, it wasn't going to be there. Did y'all do anything for them in this present budget year?
Yes, yes, we did, yes, we did, yes, yeah, yeah, we, yeah, we got them a raise also, yes, sir.
Okay, that's what I wanted to make sure.
Yeah.
Thanks, sir.
I'll move on to staff reports, Betty Lawrence.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners and Community, good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. I have a few things to share with you in terms of the library, and tonight I'm in the right place. I had to share this with you. Last Tuesday, I came here.
No meeting.
And I still didn't get it, so I went to City Hall. Came back here, all gray and scot, and all of a sudden it dawned on me because he started laughing. I said, where's the meeting? Anyway, I'm here tonight. So I just want to share a few things with you, and I'll be just a tad bit longer tonight, not real long, but I have something special I want to share with you. First of all, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to be a part of the Quid Trail, the library, our Quid is up now, and I think it's been there now for maybe a couple of months, or a month at least, and I get a lot of positive comments on it, so thank you for approving that. On September 28th and 29th, the library presented its first North Florida Heritage Festival at the Heritage Park and Garden. It featured storytelling and a historical presentation and the arts. And this event was funded, and I'm appreciative of these organizations, by Suwannee County Tourist Development Council, the State of Florida Humanities, and also Library Services and Technology Act, which is a federal funding. I do have a display out in the foyer for that particular festival, so if you have the opportunity to just take a look at it, it'll give you a flavor of what happened. And hopefully, we'll be having, making this an annual affair. The next thing that I have on my list is the Staff Development Day. Thank you all for giving us the opportunity to come together and train for the year. We have nine libraries in three counties, you know, and sometimes the staff don't really have the opportunity to get together to each other. But on this day, we come together and we concentrate on a particular theme. We work to develop goals and objectives for the year based on that theme, and then we, thanks to the friends of the library, they provide lunch for us, and we have our afternoon sessions. I have a display in the back, our theme this year was librarians, guardians of literacy. And that display will give you a flavor of what happened during the day. But we selected this theme after I attended the Florida Library Association Conference this past year, and I attended a presentation that had to do with how children and their families with disabilities learn to cope with their disabilities, and what motivates them to keep trying and keep growing through those disabilities. And they do it in a kind of weird way, not everybody understands it, but they take on the role of super, being a superhero. And the filmmaker and author of the book that we used did a documentary, and found that a lot of the children respond, or their progress is enhanced when they place themselves in the role of being a superhero. And so this year, what we will be doing at the library is developing a program that will give us the opportunity to reach further than our normal outreach programs, in that if there is a family that have children with disabilities, we will provide a library packet for those children, having talked to the parents or guardians, or even the children themselves, to find out what it is that they would like to have in the way of library services. And also, what we will be doing is, we have a lot of our children that go to hospitals outside of our area, Gainesville, Jacksonville, Tallahassee even, and when we know of a child that is in one of those hospitals, what we will do is send them a care package, letting them know that their library is thinking about them. And so that's what we're going to be doing this year as a result of our Staff Development Day. The fourth thing that I'd like to mention is an exhibit. A few, I guess maybe a couple of months or so ago, I came to the board and talked to you about the library receiving a grant, if you will, or to house a Smithsonian exhibit at the library in Live Oak on behalf of Suwannee, Hamilton, and Madison Counties. And I think I shared with you at that point that we were the only public library in this United States that applied for it and received it. All of the others are either genealogy, special libraries, university libraries, but we're the one library, one public library that applied for it, and will be having it here in Live Oak. Now, there, Cedar Keys, I think it is, that they will have the exhibit there for a while, but it is on behalf of the Genealogy Department in that particular area. So we're looking forward to that, and it's, the exhibit will take up approximately 800 square foot. We were required to have eight-foot ceiling high, and we meet that requirement here at the Live Oak branch. We will be having a reception to start the exhibit period here on December 17. We'll have more information out a little bit later in terms of the exact time, but it will be with us through January 26 of 2019. And we have also received $5,000 for programming from the Smithsonian in order to do programming in Live Oak with regards to the exhibit. I had two staff members that had to go and spend two days being trained on the logistics of the exhibit, and I think that we're, we're ready. I, I really was excited about this when I came home a few years ago, having been aware of a lot of the businesses downtown. I was trying to explain to my grandchildren what was missing, like Kent's Grocery and the Donut Store, and all of the other buildings that no longer exist. So at that particular time, I thought it would be really good if we could do sort of like a QR code posting, so that people would have the opportunity to sort of know and understand what was there before now. Well, it's sort of just been something in my mind, but I think that this exhibit and the programs will provide an opportunity to sort of revisit that idea in that, and my staff suggested this, that there are a lot of forgotten communities in Suwannee County, also Hamilton and Madison County, and that it would be really nice if we would be able to do the QR posting in those places, so that people visiting, or even those of us that live here, could walk up to it, smartphone or whatever, and, and learn a little bit about what those places were. They would, we would use the QR code, and it would link them to the library's website, and on the library's website would be a description of what was there, and they could do that with a handheld device. So I'm looking forward to that. I have not, I've been trying to think of all the logistics for it, because I do realize that posting means that there are certain regulations, I haven't talked with Mr. Harris yet, and I know that the county probably owns some of this, and I don't know what it would be in terms of working with the road department and signage. I know that in other counties, I learned that there are certain regulations that keep you from posting things on certain, on certain signs. And I also know that a lot of the places are now owned by private individuals, so we have a lot of work to do, but I think it's well worth it. So we have a lot of work to do, but I think it's well worth it, and I'll give you an update on that in the future. So that's about where we are with that. What I'd like to do is read, yes, and it's only going to be for a little while, so, so don't panic. This is from the docent handbook that comes with the exhibit from the Smithsonian. And by the way, if any of you are interested in being a docent with regards to the exhibit, just call the library and we'd gladly come and join us. So I just want to read this portion of it. Throughout the 19th century, the majority of Americans lived in rural areas. They built their lives around the work of harvesting what the land could produce, food, fuel, fiber, ores, and minerals crucial to growing, to a growing nation. They built communities at rural crossroads, small towns that became centers of commerce, politics, and culture. However, conditions favorable to robust rural communities changed. Early in the 20th century, growing urban populations shift economic investment and political influence from the counties to the cities. Since then, the pace of rural change has accelerated. Today, rural communities are at a new crossroads, a meeting point of ideas where they can chart their own future. With their innovations and creative spirit, rural Americans are helping to define and shape the future of our country. So I'm looking forward to sharing this information with our communities, and I would really appreciate your support in doing so. Just two other things, and I'll be out of here. I think it was the last meeting you approved the state grant agreement that we get every year. Well, the Department of Financial Services decided that it needed to be amended a little, so they've sent us another one during the next meeting. I'll be, I'll have that in the packet and present it to you. There are just a few changes, but they're state changes, so we have to.
Thought you fixed, they approved it that fast?
Yeah. Well, I don't think it'll choke us, it's just different.
Gotcha.
Okay. And last but not least, I'd like to thank Commissioner Sessions for all the time that you've spent with us, the support that you've given us, and I appreciate all the work that you've done in terms of.
Appreciate it.
If you all have questions or comments, I can try to address those.
No, I just want to thank you and Mark Drum in the back for y'all's work to get those door openers put in at the Downey Park Library. I've got a lot of phone calls on it, that was good. I appreciate it.
And thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 23, discuss with possible board action, purchase of property for future convention center. Mr. Harris?
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two, what'd I say?
Twenty-three.
Okay, dyslexic. Ms. Harris?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, we actually budgeted some funding to set a piece of property aside for a future convention center. The only thing that I really want to do right this moment is get the board to vote to agree that we're going to go ahead and pursue that. We'd have to bring a contract back. We can disclose everything at that time. Everything's otherwise confidential until we can produce details on everything to board consideration in a regular meeting. But it was in the budget, I just wanted to bring it for you tonight to say we need the nod to go ahead and start working on this so that we can bring it back to you.
Any questions?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead, yes, sir.
I'm just curious about the scope of this. You know, you talked about conventions there, and I know semantics, a lot of it, that's a lot to do with grants and stuff like that, I guess. But I am curious what we have in mind, because I still haven't got a clear picture of what we have in mind on this. I mean, anything.
Convention center.
Anything you can tell me.
Convention center, we're not sure yet.
I can.
Then why would I, why would I give nod to go forward?
I can make a brief comment. My brief comment is not specific to what Suwannee County may ultimately do at some time in the future, but rather what a lot of these smaller convention centers actually encompass. Typically, it's just a larger, open area that is multiple use, surrounded by some smaller meeting rooms for community events or leasing them out for events, and larger areas typically used by those that want to either come host a, some type of event and lease the facility, have nice restrooms, maybe a kitchen for serving food or warming food for vendors. But other than that, I couldn't begin to tell you, I wouldn't think that in our county right away that we would need an enormous one, but.
No. And there's, we've, we've talked about it, and there's actually, it's, it's not a board-appointed commission, it's a committee, it's just a committee of concerned citizens that were wanting to move forward and try to get a, a convention center, at least on the plan and on the radar for Suwannee County. And, and some of the ideas that have been tossed around is just what Mr. Harris said, you know, a convention center, meeting room that'll sit 600 people with some smaller rooms around it with a, like a kitchen that can be served out of. But also, other things that have been thrown in the mix just are possibilities are, you know, a room in it that serves for maybe a senior citizen, senior citizen meeting room, a relocation of an EOC and a hardened structure in it that provides a, a shelter for different uses that's come in. So there's been a lot of stuff that's thrown into the mix, but one thing that you got to do before you do anything is, is to plan ahead. I mean, we know that we're going to have, want to move forward, or I do with a convention center, and the first step into that is to, to purchase a piece of land, and we discussed that during the budget workshops, that we needed to just move forward with establishing that plan of, this is the direction we want to go. Property's probably more reasonable now, it's going to be in the near future, and it's, in my opinion, it's not a quarter trigger.
Especially if the word gets out.
As long as our room could be used for a shelter that's up to code.
I had spoken to the chairman about this, the idea of moving the EOC to a parcel of property where we might ultimately build a convention center and separate the EOC, but have hardened, both of those facilities could be constructed to meet the hurricane codes. We know we've got a problem now at the Coliseum, so this might be just a first step in getting us where we need to be, even if it's a number of years down the road before we can get there. But then, you know, when we have to host a location for these, you know, really large power crews that are coming from out of state to help with recovery efforts, we might then have a facility that can help to accommodate that. So there are a number of uses that I think all of us could sit, if we sit long enough, could identify, but this is just a first step to help us get there.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Any other questions? They have a motion to move forward with.
Just allow the county attorney and I to start working on some negotiations where we can bring you something back to consider in another meeting.
Off a motion, Chairman.
Got a motion by Commissioner Fleming, second by Commissioner Sessions. Any further discussion? Here none, all in favor, say aye. All aye, all opposed, same sign. Item 33, it's not quite ready yet, we're going to pull it, bring it back at a different Item 34, discuss with possible board action, any issues associated with the wastewater plant or the water plant at I-75? Do you have anything, Commissioner?
No issues, we're just, right now, working on easements. Mr. Revat, now.
All right. Just a quick question, and it's, it's a question that's way down the road before anything would be done, but the properties that are located there on the dirt road, that's the county line, dirt road, and on both sides, on the Columbia County side and the Suwannee County side, all of those will be made, water, sewer, it'd be an option for them to connect at some point down the road, would it not?
I, I think it's, you know, we've talked about this, and I think it's a good idea for us to have a conversation with Columbia County. Early on, Commissioner Sessions and I, and I think before that even Commissioner Oxendine had met with commissioners from the other counties that had an interest in seeing that interchange develop, and they understood that the utilities needed to be there, so I think we just go back to Columbia and talk to them about that availability. It'd be nice to have some paying customers there sooner than later, once those are up there.
And I only bring that up because recently, there's been some, a couple people reach out about it. I was just, I thought I told them right, I just wanted to make sure. And I did. All right. Additional agenda items. Oh, we got two additional agenda items, am I missing any, or is that it?
No, sir, that, I think that's it.
All right. Additional item, number one was security upgrades to Suwannee County courthouse. Mr. Baker and Mr. Harris?
Mr. Chairman, this is just, the manufacturer that produces the materials that are needed for the upgrades requires, because this is customized material, requires prepayment on the materials. We would still owe for the labor once it comes in and the installation is made, and we just need to get this authorized by the board to go ahead and order the release of that payment and send it to the company. These are materials that were bid previously. I think Swannee Glass is, was the successful.
They were the successful, they were awarded the bid, and this, this company will not ship out any product to anyone.
That's correct.
Without prepayment, because it is custom-built for one job, when it's built, it's done. Yes, sir.
Yeah, and the reason we have to bring it is not the way the original agreement was structured.
Correct.
So we just need to, you know, get approval to restructure it so that payment can be made in that fashion.
Any questions? And I have a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Got a motion to approve by Commissioner Richardson, second by Commissioner Fleming. Any further discussion? Here none, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, same sign. Item number two, discuss with possible board action, a payment to Suwannee County tax collector in the amount of $125 for the cost of property information report regarding tax deed application. Ms. Harris?
This is a unique issue, but it's one where a new property information card has to be produced for this property, and we need to pay for it. It's $125. Mrs. Jordan sent this over to, I think you'll receive a letter if you haven't already, but they hand-delivered it to the office.
That's probably what was sitting on my desk when I got in here. No. All right, any questions? I have a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Sessions, I have a second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Richardson. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, same sign. At this time, we'll open the floor to public comments, anyone wishing to speak, if they'd make their way to the podium, name and address for the record. Seeing none, move on to administrator comments and information.
Mr. Chairman, I've got several, and I'm going to try to make them quick, because I want to keep you apprised of what's going on with our rail spur, rail crossing, grant funding, US-90. Lots of things have evolved in the last couple of weeks. The rail spur itself is nearing completion. I think by, within a couple of weeks, we'll be pretty close to being finished, I believe, with the rail spur itself. As you know, I had spoken to the CDBG administrator regarding using the excess funds from CDBG to put toward that new crossing that we need to build west of the one that we took out, which we had to take out because of the rail spur. That had been authorized by DEO. And that was many months back, probably five months ago or more, six months. Well, in more recent conversations, the grant administrator has informed me that now they're going to have to do a, another environmental review, which could take four months, could take longer. They're going to try to figure out how to narrow it down some, but in addition to that, and it's because the crossing wasn't in the original, a part of the original rail spur. But then I had this $300,000 appropriation that we had requested. If you recall, I didn't know how much money we were going to need, so I was asking everyone for money. So we got $300,000 to build 175th, which is going to utilize this crossing. Because 175th is connected to that rail crossing, it requires an environmental review. And because 175th ties to 50th on the north end, 50th requires an environmental review. All this hopefully will be done as one review, but because of the crossing funding that they're allowing us to use, we have to build that road all the way up to 50, turn to the right and go over to the western property line of Kloster. Before we get there, we have to cross the new rail spur that we just built, so we have to build another crossing. Fortunately, that crossing, because it's lying on top of the original rail spur, doesn't require an environmental review, but everything getting to it does. The reason for all of this is because when we utilize the million dollars that they agreed to, roughly a million dollars, that they agreed to allow us to use to build this new crossing, so we wouldn't have to pay for it, it requires connectivity between that crossing back to the job creator, in this case Kloster. So that's a long explanation of what's going on. More importantly, we are going to have some anticipated delays as a result. I've spoken to the grant administrator about an extension of time, because I'm convinced it's going to take that, not only because of what we're going to do, but because we're having to wait for CSX to engineer and construct the improvements on that crossing within there right away, because they'll do that themselves. When I spoke to Mr. Pittman with North Florida Professional Services, he had to have a conversation with DOT because we'll be tying into US-90. They came back and said that now we have to put turn lanes on US-90 where the new crossing is, at 175th. That didn't really surprise me. If you recall, six years ago or so, when Mr. Jordan, or Jordan Green was handling our DOT, was representative DOT dealing with us, I asked him to allow us to go ahead and design turn lanes for this new crossing, which they did, and they paid for the new design, extending the four lane, which we've already widened and ended at just beyond 169. I wanted it to go to 175th. They agreed to design it, he said if we have funding to help out when the time comes, when it comes to bid, we'll go ahead and pay for it. They didn't have the funding, we bid it as an alternate, and we didn't build it. So now, we're going to need to build turn lanes down there, not necessarily extend the four lane, but build the turn lanes, right-hand and left-hand turn lanes. So DOT has a project that they just awarded to Anderson, Columbia to widen US-90 and reconstruct, starting at Madison County, and they're going to be working in our direction. So I asked Mr. Pittman to inquire of DOT first and see if they could agree to pay for those new turn lanes on US-90 as part of the project. Short story is, they cannot, but we are not aware of anything that would preclude us from negotiating with Anderson, Columbia to do that as part of that project, and that would save us mobilization expenses and a lot of other expenses that we would otherwise anticipate if we just do an outright bid, and in that case, we'd have to get DOT to agree to allow us to piggyback on their contract. So there are a number of issues, I just needed to share all of that with you to ask the board if you'd like to authorize us to go ahead and proceed with the negotiation, and then ultimately getting back to DOT on a piggyback and bringing it back to the board at a later date. I'm trying to save us money, it's the only way I can think of to do it, cheapest way to do it. to do it.
Now, we need to move forward and get on that while they're coming this way.
You have a timeline? About how long it's gonna take them to get here?
My timeline's gonna be tomorrow morning.
No, I mean.
I don't know how quickly they'll move on it. I have no idea.
How far they work.
But the sooner that we can communicate with them and try to put something together, the better, because they, you know, they could start, they can move and shake when they want to. So I just need to ask the board if you'd like to authorize us to go ahead and proceed with trying to negotiate something that we can bring back to you.
You need a motion, or?
I'll make a motion.
I'll say it. Got a motion by Mr. Hill to authorize us to negotiate. Got a second by Commissioner Sessions. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
Mr. Chairman, I've got a few more comments. That was the introduction. Matco is ready. They are chomping at the bit. They want to get in there and start making things happen on their property, and that's pretty exciting. Kloster is gonna be running a little bit later. They're having difficulty getting the equipment for the second log yard, the log yard expansion that they plan to do that's associated with part of their track work. I've spoken to Mr. Mindy about that. In fact, I copied, I think Mr. Pravat and the chairman, or an email requesting that they produce a calendar for us, showing us where they think they're going to be. When I spoke to them three weeks ago, they felt that it was probably gonna be August before they have the log yard equipment that they need. In my mind, that isn't a reason to hold up on the track work, because it takes quite a while to get done. So that's why I reached out to them a week and a half, two weeks ago, and asked them to go ahead and produce that calendar and forward it to us, so that we have a better idea of what's going on with them. Just a couple of other quick things. One, we received, you know, with the change in FEMA rules now on shelters and reimbursements, I just wanted you to know from this last event that we were prepared for and opened the shelters with the school, school board, we received an invoice for reimbursement of $6,042.08. I just wanna express my thanks to the school board for being very conservative in their approach to what was, I mean, we wrestled with that. In fact, the sheriff and I, we really struggled with whether or not to open the shelters, and, you know, finally it was done on a much smaller scale. And we did have some people there, but this reimbursement is considerably less than what we have seen in the past. So I'm thankful that the school board really worked hard on trying to minimize the expense to us on that. Of course, we have to then file if we have enough, if FEMA will accept our request for reimbursements. I think we fell just short of the threshold unless they agreed to go ahead and accept it.
Did they?
So we'll go ahead and make the request for reimbursement from FEMA for that.
That was for the Irma reimbursement?
Right.
Yes.
This was, this isn't Irma.
No, 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 but.
Did you say Irma?
The threshold that we were trying to get up to for Irma was the 157. Did we get there?
Oh, we were, yeah, this isn't for, this is for the more recent one.
Oh, no, 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 you're right, you're right. This is for, this is for the.
Yeah, this is Michael.
157 was this one, that's right.
We're still waiting on.
The Irma, we're still waiting.
We're still waiting.
Yeah, we're, that's right, we're waiting on that one, but, so we hit our 157 on this one, then.
Matter of fact, I did.
We did, but they said that, that wasn't gonna accept it.
So we got close.
And we're not sure exactly what, how much percent they're gonna reimburse, but they're gonna reimburse, but it may not be up there for sale, but they still get to do something like that.
That's good.
Good. I think I called you, but I did, did I tell you I got a phone call from Neil Dunn's office today about the letter we sent regarding the reimbursement for?
We're gonna obtain all of that.
He, they said they would be calling back to either Ms. Debbie or Diana, beginning of next week, for some additional information.
I think Sharon probably has all of that, but she should, because they should have all the records over there. But we're gonna do whatever's necessary to get them whatever they think they need.
Okay.
Try to move that along, it's been a long time. Mr. Chairman, there's one other thing I want to make a brief comment on. Mr. Baker's aware of it, Mr. Pravat, a few others, Eric, I guess Eric isn't here tonight, but we had a meeting today and a discussion, quite a lengthy one. And I can't get into all of the details right now on it, because we're still looking for lots of answers, but we had a discussion about the volume of information that we are providing on our websites, and it appears that we're gonna have to, until we come up with a real good solution that's much cheaper than what was suggested to us today, we may have to reduce the amount of information that we're making available on the website, because we need to address some issues that were brought to our attention. And I'll bring you more detail on that when I have more, but I just wanted to share that with you now, and we'll keep you apprised of what's going on there.
Any questions for Mr. Harris?
No.
Well, we're still on your stuff. Just wanted to make a quick request on behalf of the supervisor of elections. I'm sure some of y'all noticed that we're there, working on the canvassing board during the election in the last week with the ballots, but it gets mighty dark in that back little alleyway, those workers and ladies coming out. If we could get maintenance or whoever we need to over there to address some lighting issues, I walked out, had to use my cellphone, like, get downstairs, I mean, it was black, black, you couldn't see nothing.
You can't even see nobody standing out there, huh?
Yeah.
We'll take care of that. I, yeah, I've taken a look at that, see what we can do.
Any other questions or anything for Mr. Harris?
No.
That's all I had, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks, sir. Board members, requests, comments, start down there with you, Mr. Richardson.
Couple things. One thing is, I'll be coming back, talking more with the attorney about this. We have an ordinance for ATVs, the use of ATVs on county roads. As many people know, there's a statute, Florida statute exempted ATVs from being maybe illegal on county roads that are graded that are less than 35 miles an hour, or 35 miles an hour or less. And the county at some point in the past chose to write an ordinance that made it illegal to operate these vehicles on these roads. I say this, I don't have a problem with people driving up and down roads. I personally don't have a problem with them at all. I have a problem with, and I'm getting a lot of complaints to people doing donuts in the middle of intersections and tearing up county roads. It's not, I don't think it's not so much the ATVs, there are now these, what the state terms as ROVs, we always call them UTVs, they're, they're these big giant four-wheel, fast-moving off-road vehicles. And I talked to Mr. Pravat about it, he, I think he's, I can't see it in the statutes, but where they upgraded, they updated the statute itself, but I know that they included the verbiage in the definitions, but in the statute itself, it doesn't include ROVs. And that's the best, that's the best acronym, I think, that defines these vehicles. My point of it is, is people who, who drive on back roads that are going back and forth places, I have a problem with. We don't have right-of-ways on these back county roads where they can drive, and I don't think we should make them illegal. But if the state has exempted now ROVs from the same rule, then maybe we should consider updating our ordinance to also include ROVs, but instead of just making a blanket, making it illegal for all of them to travel, I think we should do a better job of regulating them and putting some, some conditions on them that are legal, obviously legal conditions. And I think that that's a conversation I'd have with Mr. Pravat.
All right, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
And whenever you get into making any of the things that you do there, there will be specific requirements of marking each of the roads. You have to designate the road, and you have to mark it with particular signage that'll, that will let anybody know that these types of vehicles may be on the road. I think that's why the county had opted out before, saying, you know, nothing, you know, on there, because they didn't want to get into the process of, you know, picking and choosing where they can go. But just be aware that if you, if you also choose to do that, you have to designate it, and then you have to, you know, put particular types of signage there as well.
I just believe that we, as a commissioner, need to address, if we, if it's, I've talked with the sheriff many, many times about this, he knows a particular road that is a problem in our area. I mean, they just wait until it's nicely graded, then they go out there and tear it completely up, so.
But that's a different issue. That's not where, that's allowed or not allowed. I mean, it don't matter if you're driving a truck, a four-wheeler, or a dirt bike, you're not allowed to tear up roads.
I agree with that. I'm not saying that. If that were the only issue, then I would have addressed it with sheriff, and that would have been the end of it.
Okay.
Because the state is, is making it more and more legal for people to operate these unlicensed vehicles on, on county roads, I think that we, as a county, need to at least take a look at it and see what we can do. So I'm going to talk more with Mr. Pravat and ask him to help me come up with something that I can present to the board and deal with it, and I would love to hear the public's opinion on this matter, because I'm getting enough of it in my district.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Are these the side-by-sides he's referring, is that, is that what the?
Correct, the side-by-sides?
Yeah, not golf carts.
Yeah, yeah. And I don't mind having a discussion about it, but I mean, there's a lot of farmers that use them to go from.
That's my thoughts.
Yeah, that's why I don't want to make them necessarily illegal.
Yeah, and there's a lot of states and counties now that are starting to, like you say, make them street legal with insurance on them, and they can just drive them around. But I'm with you, if they're tearing up the roads, then that's, that's something we need to enforce.
Yeah, I don't mind addressing and enforcing that, but I don't want to get into the overregulation of anything.
Of course. Second thing I want to talk about is just Mr. Sessions. I, you know, I've had the opportunity to work with Mr. Sessions at SVTA, and I appreciate his candor when it comes to his opinion. He makes his opinion clear, and I appreciate his thoughtfulness for others, and I've just, I've just come to become friends with Commissioner Sessions, and I miss him on the board. I think he's done a wonderful job, and I think the county's gonna be, is gonna miss him. Nothing against Lynn, and look forward to working with you, but I.
Shut up, Lynn. You're all right.
I just wanted to say thank you for your service.
I got a few things for you before you leave. Homework starts tonight.
Starts tonight.
Wish you the best of luck as well.
Thank you.
Anything else, sir? Is that it? Mr. Fleming?
I just have a couple of things. First of all, I'd like to say goodbye to Commissioner Sessions off the board. This is my third different commission that I've worked with, Commissioner Stapleton. I had the privilege of working with Commissioner Oxendine, and of course, Commissioner Sessions. He and I had some, she had some personal things, and he definitely will be missed off this board, nothing less to incumbent commissioner, but Commissioner Sessions is one of those guys that, just like I've been knowing him all the time. He knew a lot about me from my father, and so we just hit it right off. And he's a great man, and, you know, your endeavors, whatever you, you know, you go into, I hope you the best, hope and pray the best for you.
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you for that. And the next thing, Mr. Harris, I guess this would fall in your lap, for Thanksgiving, county employees, will they be getting off at half a day, or, we didn't discuss that?
I think we set that in policy last year.
They just set it in policy.
I think we took care of it.
Okay, okay. Well, just wanted to bring that up.
I appreciate that. The employees will too, but they're thrilled with the way it is now.
Okay. I don't have anything else.
Mr. Hill?
I'd just like to say what everybody else is saying, I'm gonna miss Commissioner Sessions. I didn't know him before I became a board member, but I have gained a friend, for sure. I appreciate all your guidance and advice, and I was hoping you would bring that golden calculator and leave it here with us, that you always bring. There you go. On his home. But he will be missed. He's been a big part of this board, and I think in moving this county forward, whatever it do. Good endeavors.
Thank you, man, I appreciate it. Yeah, I want to echo the same thing, Mr. Sessions. You came on the board, as far as I'm concerned, just at the right time. I was sitting on a big project that was 3-2 vote to go the other way, and. Help Miss Betty out. You did. I'm proud Miss Betty didn't mention it when she was standing up here, but not just that project, but several projects throughout the last four years that have came across in front of this board, rail spur, different things with economic development, I-75, 136.
Don't forget chip seal.
Chip seal.
Good problem for that.
Many things that have moved us, what I consider into the right direction for the county. For many years, and I've known some people sitting out in the audience have seen it, the board's been a stalemate, not willing to work together, and nothing got done. And I'd say, over the last four years, it's probably been four of the most successful years, as far as a board working together and getting stuff done in, in recent history with this board. So I just wanted to thank you for coming together and working as one board for the betterment of Swanee County. And one thing I can say about the commissioners that are sitting up here is that, and you were one of the ones that really drove this home, is that nothing was personal, everything was business. We disagreed, and we can leave it right here and go on like nothing ever happened, and that's what makes a good board work good together. So thank you for everything, and most of all, thank you for that third vote on the library.
Well, it's my turn. I'm humbled by all the, all the compliments and all this. There's a lot of things that we've done as a board, and I'm proud to say that I was part of it. The one thing I want to leave everybody with, if Swanee County's ever gonna get anywhere, we have to worry about economic development. We own the real estate. Logistically, it's better than anybody in the state has. We have I-10 and I-75. Always remember that, because the people flooding into Florida, about 80% of them come down I-75. And if we don't take advantage of it and use other money, other people's money to pay our bills, and we don't build something out there, you know, we're gonna get left in the dark. So economic development's a big deal for me, and I hope it is for everybody else. The other thing is the convention center, we mentioned earlier. We are in a unique location. We're south of Aldosta, we're west of Jacksonville, we're east of Tallahassee and north of Gainesville. People come for tournaments, they have nowhere to go or do things or have meetings. You could have big companies throughout the northern part of Florida that could come meet right here as a central location to meet and do things, and we can rent this convention center out. So I think it's something that we need to have on our radar, and we need to really plan for, because the sooner we get it in the ground, the sooner we start making money on it. And the last thing is our infrastructure that we're working on. The sooner we get it in the ground, the sooner we get paying customers. And this thing about Columbia County, the other thing that will help us with being that close to the river, if you have paying customers on your sewage system, you're reducing the amount of septic tanks and the amount of groundwater leakage, you know, it's just good for everybody, especially ecotourism. So other than that, I just want to say it's been a real great opportunity for me, and I'm just blessed to have had this opportunity to help do some things in this county, and I just want to thank everybody. That's about all I got.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I just want to tell Commissioner Sessions that I made some real nice comments about you in the last meeting.
He did.
Yeah, I know, I missed the meeting.
You might want to check that video out.
I'll look at it, okay.
But it's been a joy working with you, I appreciate you, I really do. You know, you, it was convenient working with you, because you were just down the road working with the transportation, and I appreciate your input. I know we've met with you many, many times, you and, you know, some of the department heads would meet down there with us, and we'd just talk our way through things, come up with solutions when we had opportunities to do so, and I appreciate your input in those.
Thank you. Ms. Baker?
All right, I just wanted to say, I want to say the same thing. I appreciate the way that you. I appreciate the way that you've worked along with our staff. I appreciate your, your perspective. It's like, like Don said, you always had your calculator, and you were always able to bring it. Whenever you brought it out, it was always a new perspective, and that's the way that you were able to take and, and be able to, I consider you a leader, and I appreciate your work on the commission.
Thank you, Mayor.
Y'all, it's in my fault for the long meeting.
I will belabor it again, thanks, but thanks Fran for putting up with you, because I know you bring it home, but thank you, Fran, also.
Absolutely. Last but not least, I, a few months back, you know, you kind of get into politics and get out knocking on people's doors and talking to them, and every one of you up there know, we talked to a lot of people. And I want you to know, Mr. Sessions, I talked to a lot of people, and there was a lot of good things said, and we're going to do the best to keep it going. We appreciate you, and you've went above and beyond in helping me with anything I needed. Means a lot to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn.
Just don't leave. I really do have some.
He does. He got a stack up here for you.
This is a waste of paper you need to have.
Anyone have anything else? If not, then.
Most adjourned.
Most adjourned. That's the second.
Right.
Thank you all for coming up, putting up with us tonight.